And we are go. We'll call a Shakopee City Council meeting to order for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. We can take the roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Delaney? Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Councilmember Lara? Mayor Lehman?
Here. Item number two, stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda from staff?
No, sir.
Council?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilor Lara, seconded by Councilor Contreras. Questions to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number four, consent to business. Any changes from council? I would like to remove just the one item, four D one. Any changes from staff? Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent to business. Our consent agenda has modified.
Sir, second?
Second.
Motion by Councilor Whiting, seconded by Councilor Delaney, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for today. Four A one are the city council minutes. Four A two is a monthly financial review encompassing August of twenty twenty-three. Four A three is the Shakopee Chamber request for Manah Brewing Company's first anniversary party. Four A four is the Minnesota DNR Shade Tree Program grant application. Four A five declares amounts, orders the preparation of proposed assessments, and sets a public hearing date for delinquent refuse bills. Four B one is the Shakopee Skate School Agreement addendum dealing with room rentals. Four C one is a preliminary and final plat for Realcore second edition. Four C two is the annexation of Mendot and DNR property and Jackson Township property off Zumbro Avenue. Four C three is Highview Park MUSA Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Four C four awards contracts for Windermere Neighborhood Park construction. Four C five is a contract with One O Six Group for the Memorial Park Archaeology Monitoring. Four D two is the drainage and utility easement encroachment agreement, and four D three is also a drainage and utility easement encroachment agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number five, recognition of interested citizens by the city council. If there's anybody here that would like to address this on an item not on the agenda, now would be that time. Anybody that would like to address us on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six, business removed from the agenda. I took off four D one, there was questions about the water early on in this project from the both the township, actually it was prior to this development even coming forward, the high water mark in their pond and where it flows to the east under, is it fifteen? Marystown Road, and there's a house on the corner and all that stuff. So I was reading the report and appreciate the information that you sent out more in detail, but some of these calculations, you know, I'm certainly not an engineer by any stretch. But when we did our tour, we saw this was all a farmland. And I'm thinking, I just assume less water flows off of a field than it does driveways, rooftops, streets, and so on and so forth. So I want to make sure we're really covered on not flooding out anything to the east since that concern was raised by the townships early on. So, Mr. Engineer, if you will?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I did put together some information addressing this issue. The Highview Park development came before you previously as a preliminary and final plat application from D.R. Horton in conjunction with development of the property south of Conner Road seventy-eight, west of Marystown Road, along Zumbro Avenue. There are impacts to delineated wetlands. Now, those wetlands that are impacted are shown in orange on the attached exhibit. Sorry, I tried to show the whole two hundred and thirty-four acre site, and the amount of wetland impacts is only point eight acres, so they're rather small. I think, Mayor, your concerns are more so of the drainage perspective and not necessarily on the wetland impacts.
Correct.
Staff worked really closely with D.R. Horton and their engineer to prepare a stormwater management plan to meet the city's ordinance requirements along with state and federal regulations. With development of property, you are correct that we build houses, we build streets, we build hardscape impervious areas that generate more runoff than the existing conditions of a farmland. However, in order to mitigate that, developers are required to construct what are known as stormwater management basins. Now, those stormwater management basins essentially create holding areas that restrict the rate at which runoff leaves the site. And the way they do that is by creating large storage through ponds and also having smaller outlets for pipes. So the water can only leave through those outlet pipes in a certain rate because the pipes are only so large to be able to carry that water. And in that event, when it rains, those ponds fill up because they have natural capacity in the storage areas to reduce that outlet. The Highview Park development outlets to four different areas in the site. Generally, it outlets to the west, to the south, to the east, under Marystown Road, which, Mayor, is what you had addressed, and also to the northeast, to the existing pond within Jackson Park. Now, with the development, we require the developer to analyze all of those discharge areas to ensure that the peak discharge rates in the developed condition are less than what was in the predeveloped condition. And again, the way they're able to achieve that is by constructing those stormwater management basins and reducing that rate at which it outlets. So we analyze different storm events. We analyze what's known as the two-year event, the ten-year event, and the hundred-year event. The hundred-year event is the one percent chance that that storm annually occurs. Typically, we don't see that each year because, again, there's only a one percent chance of that happening, but we still make the developer analyze that as a worst-case condition. So the table I presented in black is the existing condition discharge rate. Now, that's the amount of water over a period of time. So you can imagine water pushing downstream. Reviewing the existing compared to the proposed in each condition, you can see that the proposed condition with those stormwater basins and outlet structures is less than the existing condition, not only as a development as a whole, but also looking at each of those discharge locations. Secondly, with that, we know we're pushing more volume downstream because we're generating more runoff. We also analyze the high water level of areas off-site. So you can look at that Jackson Township, Jackson Park Pond, which is an existing nice area. Because we're reducing that rate at which water leaves the site to get to that pond, the high water level in that hundred-year storm, again, that one percent chance that that storm happens, actually decreased by a tenth of a foot, which is nominal. But what that shows is that they're meeting our ordinance requirements, that they're not causing issues downstream by raising high water levels or pushing water faster downstream so that the downstream pipes and storm sewer systems are able to handle that runoff from the proposed condition in any rainfall event.
Thank you. So I think the piece I was missing is that the ponds are going to drain from the blue area into the Jackson Park Pond, but they're going to drain in there at a controlled rate.
That's correct.
So that the Jackson Park Pond doesn't get over the high water level, which is when the concern happened for the township building and the neighbor across the road and all that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Very good. I appreciate your presentation and helping me link them dots together.
Not a problem.
Any further questions for staff? Mr. Whiting?
No, it sounds like all the engineering is there to keep that water in place or where it's supposed to be anyway. So with that, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution R. twenty twenty-three tech zero nine nine, approving a wetland replacement plan for Highview Park.
Sir, second?
Second.
Councilor Whiting, seconded by Councilor Delaney. Any questions on the motion? Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mayor and council.
Item seven-one A, proposed levy, tax levies, preliminary general fund budget and levy cancellation. My next director.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we'll be asking for city council adoption of the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget and levy. Let me open up the slide here. So if approved, this will be the maximum levy. The city will be allowed to levy for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, so going forward from this point, the levy cannot be increased. There's a lot of slides that I've included from our August fifteenth work session. I won't cover them in as much detail. I did remove the slides on the legislative changes. As you recall, many of the new laws have an impact on operations and budgets for years to come. This information is still available in the memo, but I've removed it from the PowerPoint. And just a reminder that the PowerPoint presentation and the memo will be available on the website. Actually, is available on the website currently. So if anybody's interested in more information, I review, or I encourage them to review them on the website. So just wanted to start with a few overlying comments on the twenty twenty-four budget before getting into the details. We have seen an eight percent growth in taxable market value over the past year, including one hundred and eighty-two million from new construction. Preliminary budget and assessment data shows the tax rate will continue to decrease. We contend to be one of the lowest tax communities in the state. Out of cities, out of a hundred cities with population of ten thousand or more, we're the thirteenth lowest for our property tax rate. Residential will see a decrease in their property taxes. The median value home will see a decrease of sixty-two dollars or six point four percent. And then the budget provides an investment in public safety, including the addition of two patrol officers, which are the first two new officers we've added in the last five years. We do have some changes from the work session, from our last work session that we had on the budget. Market value information, they've been, it's been revised for the most recent estimates from Scott County, resulting in a small decrease in the total market value from the March preliminary estimates. Fiscal disparities, the calculation for the distribution amount has been provided, resulting in a decrease of what the city will receive by one hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred. This will require an increase in our property tax levy to offset this reduction. Health insurance, the budget has been increased for health insurance by an additional one hundred and four thousand. It's now at a twenty point nine percent total increase. The budget at the work session included a fifteen percent increase. The H.R. specialist, positional duties have been refined to include administrative support and is now being proposed as a full-time position, which is an increase of fifty-four thousand from the previous proposed part-time position. And then the budget placeholders, the budget previously included placeholder of a hundred and fifty thousand, allotted for operational changes for departmental budgets and three hundred thousand to account for legislative impacts, union negotiations, and insurance. Department budgets have now been entered, and the hundred and fifty thousand have been removed as the placeholder. And then the preliminary proposed budget includes now one hundred and sixty-five thousand, so reduced from three hundred thousand for the legislative impacts, union negotiations, and insurance unknowns moving forward. I did cover this slide at our last, last one, so I'll just skip this one for now. One slide here to touch on residential property values, just to provide some overall context. When you take a look at residential values from the last assessment, seventeen percent of homes had an increase in value. The remaining eighty-three percent had no change or a decrease, and those changes have been relatively minimal. There was only two percent that saw a value increase greater than five percent, and only ten percent that saw a value decrease greater than five percent. So overall, minimal change from last year's values for most property owners. I have updated the slide through twenty twenty-four. The gross tax capacity is adjusted for the fiscal disparities program, which is unique to the seven county metro area. Forty percent of commercial and industrial growth since nineteen seventy-one gets contributed into the pool. And then in turn, we receive a distribution based on the population and market value of all our property per person compared to average market value per person in the metro area. We are one of the larger net contributors to this program. Based on twenty twenty-three data, we're ninth largest contributor out of one hundred and seventy-nine communities. This chart shows the fiscal disparities, net contribution in terms of tax capacity. So with our growing industrial and commercial, commercial base has gone from about two point one million in twenty fifteen to six point seven in twenty twenty-four. And then to put that in context with total tax capacity is about six, six point five percent of our tax capacity.
Question. So when we courted our economic development for commercial and industrial properties, we're actually getting penalized on the fiscal disparity side?
I don't know if I'd necessarily use those same terms, but forty percent of any commercial and industrial gets contributed in the pool, and then we in turn get a portion of it back based on that calculation.
We lose the most of it.
We, yeah, we, well, we can, forty percent of the value is being put into that pool, and we're one of the larger net contributors to that.
Can't forget that sixty percent that we're keeping in town or whatever, or whoever. Any other questions? Continue.
So this is the tax capacity slide that I've shown, shown multiple times before, too. If you look at our residential in comparison to last year, last year it was fifty-one point two percent of total task capacity. This year it's forty-six point six percent, so a small, smaller portion of what we collect in property taxes are being collected from residential for twenty twenty-four. The preliminary city levy is at twenty-five million four hundred and seventy-three thousand, which is an increase of a million five hundred and eighty-one thousand or six point six two percent over last year. Preliminary EDA levy is set at five hundred thousand, which is flat from the previous year. We are proposing to continue the seven hundred thousand capital improvement levy and then proposing decreases in the abatement and debt service levies. And then to put things into context, when we talk about a one percent levy increase-decrease, that amounts to about two hundred and thirty-nine thousand of funding each year.
Hold on one sec. Back up, there you go. The twenty sixteen abatement, community center?
Yeah, that would be the community center.
And the twenty-two A is?
Capital improvement projects mainly, primarily used for road projects, or used for road projects.
Okay, so is the twenty sixteen A the same as just, just the twenty-six?
Yep, so I do have a slide on that. I'll just kind of skip over to that, and then I can answer your question, and then we can kind of go back. So what we're proposing to do, because you, we're required when we have our levies to levy a hundred and five percent of any of our next year's payments, is required by debt covenants. So when we've levied a hundred and five percent, we've collected more than what we typically, or more than what you would need for that payment. So we're proposing to utilize that existing balance that we have to bring that levy to the flat, two hundred, two million one hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Okay.
And then for the twenty twenty-two, since I'm on the slide, the twenty twenty-two levy. So if you recall, that levy is three hundred and forty-seven, scheduled to be three hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-six bucks. Last year, we transferred two hundred thousand from our local projects one, so we, the plan was to step in it over a two-year period. At the start of this year, we set aside an additional two hundred and twenty-six thousand to kind of delay that levy one more year. So both of these will require a resolution, which is in front of you today, too, to cancel those, those debt services and reduce the amount that we have to levy for them.
Okay.
So here's the summary of the twenty twenty-four preliminary general fund budget. Budget incorporates the general fund portion of the preliminary tax levy along with the budget impact items that I'll cover over the next few slides. Public safety includes police, fire, and building inspection. That continues to be the largest portion of our budget. So here's a summary of changes impacting the twenty twenty-four preliminary levy, which I'll touch on each one of these items over the next few slides here. Beginning with revenues, cities anticipating overall net increase in non-property tax revenue sources of eight hundred and twenty-one thousand. This would include utilizing two hundred and eleven thousand of public safety funds to offset the cost of the two patrol officers. And then anticipated revenue increases based on the pilot agreement with Shakopee Public Utilities. We received five percent of total utility revenue. Tax abatement levy is required for all city-approved tax abatements. Effectively, the city increases the levy, the, an amount equivalent to the taxes paid on a specific project that meets city's business subsidy policy requirements, which include job-related goals and wages. The levy will be reduced in twenty twenty-four as a result of the last year of the Emerson tax abatement and then removal of the Shutterfly abatement, which is no longer meaning any job requirements. The net reduction in the tax abatement levy is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And then mentioned on the first slide, the fiscal disparities distribution amount is seeing a decrease of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred. Those are the more significant amounts.
Question, is, where'd it go? Building, building permit revenue is seventy-five thousand. Is that what we talked about at the last meeting where we've collected these fees for inspections that are going on to the following year?
No, this will be strictly current revenues. So we have roughly in our budget a little over three million in total building permit revenue, so it's pretty consistent with what we had budgeted this year.
Right, but last, last year we transferred some of that, one hundred and twenty thousand roughly.
Yeah, so last year we utilized some of the revenues that we had received from the previous year to help lower that, that budget cost. Effectively, we're utilizing fund balance to kind of bring the levy down. It's really what we're doing.
So why, why are we not doing that this year?
I think we're trying to move towards more of a balanced budget. So if you're looking at it from an accounting perspective, you're utilizing money from a previous year to lower the levy from the, to the next year. It's ultimately not a balanced budget if you do that. We have, however, we have set aside two hundred thousand at the fund balance. So in total, we had four hundred and six, overages of four hundred and twenty-six thousand at the end of, after our audit. We set aside two hundred and twenty-six for the debt service and then two hundred thousand to offset sand venture operations. So we're still utilizing a portion of fund balance to it. We're just not looking at the building permit revenues.
I'll reiterate what I said at the last time. We're, we're taking in permit fees. When we decided to set these aside, at that time, when we discussed it as a council, we said a lot of these, people are paying for this service, and the service is going beyond the end of that year. So we should be using some of that revenue to pay, to continue the services that they purchased in the prior year into the next year. Otherwise, we have the taxpayers paying the full cost of all of the wages when a lot of that cost is supposed to be recuperated from the actual permit fee.
Yep, so.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Operationally, I totally agree with you. It's an issue that I've had for years on this particular item. From an accounting perspective, though, it's cleaner. And, you know, Nate is certainly correct when he says that if we do that, it gives the appearance from an accounting perspective that we're, we are supplementing next year's, this year's budget with, with, next year's budget with this year's revenues. There's no doubt we could get a two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollar permit fee come in in December. And you were exactly right, there's no way in the world that we're going to use those funds in December. They will be used in the next year. And operationally, I believe that, that's something that, and we have done it in the past. The one thing that I will say is that as we get closer to market disruption or market concerns, we do want to pull that back just to make sure that we are not overextending ourselves. And Nate and I have had that discussion, and the planning process was to use it when we know that things are hot. And then when things start to be a little uneasy, then be more conservative and walk them back. And that's what we've done.
So are things hot, or are they pulling back right now?
Well, there's certainly an argument that they continue to be hot. But I think with the overall market forces and concerns about what the Fed is doing and the impacts of inflation, it's prudent that we do pull back at this point.
Still a lot of unfinished basements out there.
No, that's not the issue. The issue is, is that we're, essentially, we're having the taxpayers pay the wages of all the inspectors in advance with tax money for services that they were paid for at the end of the prior year.
Well, and it wouldn't, the taxpayers wouldn't be paying for it. Those revenues are coming in, and those revenues are what's paying for all of the building officials. So it's not falling on the backs of the taxpayers, per se. But again, I don't disagree with you. I think operationally, we know that what the case is going to be. But from a purely accounting standpoint, this is essentially how it is supposed to be done.
So let me ask this, where, where does this excess permit dollars reside, where, where do they sit?
So that's a good question. So one of the council actions, council actions from when I first got here was to create a fund balance that was committed to building permit inspections. So we effectively are setting aside within our fund balance a certain percentage of building permit revenues based on revenue, the timing of the year that it's received. So right now, I'm working off the top of my head, but at the end of last year, it was about one point five million. So that's based on a formula saying, you know, in December, we're going to set aside, you know, eighty percent of this revenue in, keep in mind, this isn't quite right, but it works like this. In November, it was seventy percent. In October, revenues is like sixty percent. So that in a given year, when you have your revenues come down unexpectedly, you won't have that same offset the following year, and that amount will, that formula will create a decrease in that fund balance, and that money would be available for.
So if I'm understanding what you're saying is we're kind of doing it like we do with the community center memberships from the time of when they purchase it and when we book it, based on the time of year. So if somebody gets a permit in January, we're probably using the whole hundred percent for that year. If they're doing it in June, middle of the year, it's like a fifty percent. Kind of like we do with the community center membership.
I, I think that is probably a pretty accurate way to describe it. And it is all based on open permits, too, so if they're closed.
Right.
We're not using that as part of the formula.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds?
There's currently a lot of discussion at the legislature on this and other issues in regards to housing and fees. And as you all are well aware, last Thursday, I was actually at a charity event, and I specifically talked to several representatives about this specific issue and about how, and I use the, I use just what I said, we could have a five hundred thousand come in in December, and we know that we're not going to use that. And so I've been advocating for some kind of a carve-out that recognizes what the physical realities on the ground are. I'll continue to try to push for that at the legislature because I think that's, that's reality.
Right.
And, and that's from my perspective what we should be doing.
Right. Because we know when we charge for that permit in December, we know right at that point that we're going to be doing all this work on this project into the future until it's completed.
Absolutely.
Okay. I apologize, continue.
Oh, no, no worries. Moving on to expenditures, like most other cities, our operational costs are primarily driven by personnel. Represents about half of our current increase. Wages and benefits make up about seventy percent of our city general fund costs. The city has three unions, which is the patrol. The city has three unions, which is the patrol sergeants and public works. All three of the, these unions are currently in negotiations for 2024. The preliminary 2024 has been built with the assumption that union, non-union wages will see an equivalent three percent cost of living adjustment. This amounts to five hundred and eight thousand across all employee groups. The city is, the city's health insurance rates will be increasing twenty, twenty point nine percent for 2024. Data shows that our utilization over the twenty, the past twenty-four months have had a, a impact on those rates. The city is proposing the following new staff positions, which would be two full-time patrol officers at a cost of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. The city has, again, not added any sworn officers over the past five years. And then this would be offset by the use of the one-time public safety funding, which we'll receive at the end of this year. A full-time human resource specialist at a cost of a hundred and seven thousand. This position will include administrative support to the city administrator and other members of the administration department. Twenty twenty-four will be a presidential election year requiring the hiring of election judges. City will have to comply with new early voting requirements leading up to the election day, which will require a significant increase in hours. And then we're also proposing a, a dollar increase in election judge wages from fourteen dollars to fifteen dollars for head judges and then eleven to twelve dollars for election judges. That net impact, based on the election year, is a hundred and eight thousand. The fire department supervisor positions, which were three that we had budgeted to be implemented on July first, twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-four now includes the full year of that cost, which would be about a hundred and two thousand. And then Park and Recreation, they've implemented numerous staffing changes over the past couple of years. This includes moving part-time positions to full-time positions and then changes to various program offerings. We've reevaluated the part-time hours within Parks and Rec and further reduced those by a hundred and eleven thousand.
Questions?
I'm sorry, did we say what would, you know, those other? What, what's the other?
So there's many, many, many different things that kind of, kind of go into this. So the reason why it's a decrease in this particular case, so usually you have your step increases and they're usually, it's a positive amount, but we actually, one of the positions you approved at the last council meeting actually resulted in one of the engineer positions moving into one of the utilities. So you're seeing a shift from the levy into being paid for utilities. And then there's also the, the instance where you may have a more experienced employee be replaced by a less experienced employee, so you may have a, have a adjustment there. So nothing that I could really pull out and, and quantify very well, but.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, the other column is, I always, as a finance director, I always hate the other column too, so I, I really appreciate the question.
But in the real world of business, that other column is pretty critical. It covers the unforeseen expenses that you might have during your operations.
So, let's see here, where did I leave off? Okay, operational changes. So I listed out here the operating adjustments. I, I don't know if I'm necessarily going to go through these, but just basically, these are contractual utility increases, so kind of your inflationary increases from, from the previous years for the most part. So these are, these are operational increases that will continue into future budgets as well. The city uses internal service funds to accumulate funds for the purchase of, and replacement of city equipment and facilities. Funding sources are annual rents, which is our, our internal charges to the appropriate departments. The equipment rent increase is a result of both new equipment being added and then as well as just year-over-to-year cost increases in vehicles and equipment. My twenty, twenty-year equipment replacement schedule has been included in the five-year capital improvement plan that identifies all general fund equipment, useful life, replacement years and costs. The increase in building rent, this is based on the estimated construction cost to sand venture. Rents have been adjusted to reflect the future replacement costs as well as the internal borrowing, which we've discussed previously. The net general fund impact of the rent changes in comparison to last year is about three hundred and seventy-six thousand. The one-time adjustments, so for the most part, we've modi, you know, moderated the swings up and down through the use of internal service charges. However, we do have a couple of one-time adjustments included in the budget. These costs would not be reoccurring in the future, the larger one-time being, one being the implementation of our ERP software. And then the placeholder, that would, so we are proposing a, a placeholder of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, which is currently the unknown, which hopefully at some point will be known or we can reduce this. This amount we're setting aside for legislative impacts, union negotiations and whatever may come out of workers' comp insurance and property insurance increases. As I mentioned, the, the exact impacts are not known at the time where we're asking for the preliminary levy. And then the fund balance assignments, last year we used about a hundred and twenty-six thousand. This year we're proposing to use two hundred thousand, which would offset sand venture operations.
And is that, is that because the first half of the year, sand ventures are going to be closed?
You know, I think what we did is we looked at what we had available for fund balance and not knowing where this budget was going to take us, we, we set that aside in order to ultimately bring down the levy, knowing this may be a, a more difficult year. It does give a little bit more flexibility, not knowing, you know, when it'll open or how, how things will do, but ultimately, we wanted to, you know, be able to bring down that, the net cost to basically zero for next year for sand venture operations. I shouldn't say the net cost, I should say the net impact on the levy payers. And then just one slide here on the EDA, I won't go too far into deal, but in, into depth on this, but at the last EDA meeting, EDA approved about, or approved a recommended five hundred thousand levy, which is no change from last year. This will require a city council approval as well, which we have a resolution for that. This chart is comparing the city's tax passing, tax rate over the past ten years, including the 2024 preliminary levy. Based on the preliminary assessment value data, the proposed tax levy will decrease the tax rate from twenty-eight point five eight five to twenty-seven point four six three, which continues the trajectory, as you can see over the past decade, of lowering that tax rate. This chart above, or this chart on the slide provides the median value home and city property taxes paid since 2019. The value of the median value home has, has decreased from three forty-six, five hundred to three thirty-eight, four hundred over the past year, a decrease of a little over eight thousand or two point six percent. For the median value home, this equates to a decrease of sixty-two dollars or six point four percent annually in property taxes. Absent any change in value, homeowners could expect a tax decrease of thirty-eight dollars or three point nine percent. And then again, when we talk about the one percent, a one percent levy increase or decrease, it amounts to about nine dollars annually on the median value home. So Shockley is below our comparable and surrounding cities when it comes to the cost of, cost compare, cost comparison of city property taxes, sanitary sewer and storm water charges. The following chart provides the 2023 annual cost of services on a two hundred and fifty thousand value home that uses about, or uses five thousand gallons of water of uses in a month. Staff does anticipate proposing rate increases to keep up with operational increases for both sewer and stormwater, probably in the range of one to three percent. For a typical residential user, this would amount to about five dollars annually in sewer and about a dollar in surface water. Utility rates will be part of the proposed fee schedule in the fall and we can have a discussion on that then. But for Shockley next year, we still anticipate will be on the bottom and actually we'll see a decrease in that total amount of cost from 2023. So that nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars will be less for 2024 when I show the slide. One slide here for reference on the calendar. So city council will need to adopt the preliminary levy tonight. At the next meeting in October, we'll ask for approval of the final 2024 to 2028 CIP. Just a reminder, the levy cannot be increased moving forward after, after September thirtieth. The property tax notices that will be mailed by the county in November, that'll reflect whatever you approve tonight. And then in December, we'll hold our public hearing and then ask for city council to adopt the final budget. So with that, there's three requested actions, three resolutions for you to vote on tonight, which would be 106, which cancels the debt service levy on the abatement bonds and the 2022 AGO improvement bonds. 107, that sets the preliminary city levy at twenty-five million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand. And then sets the truth and taxation meeting, which is our public hearing on December fifth. And then 108, which approves the preliminary EDA levy of five hundred thousand.
Questions of staff?
I had a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
So has the max tax levy ever decreased? I mean, once you said that, has it ever dropped before the?
Yeah, so I, I don't think it has since I've been here at the city. I think what we've set as the preliminary levy, we've, we've kept the, the four years that I've been here. But at other places I've been at, it's absolutely been reduced, so.
Yep. I mean, I look at the, the growth, it looks like three point four percent or eight hundred and fifteen thousand, but our levy has increased by six point two percent. It looks like our growth is not keeping up with the city services that we're, we're providing. I think we got lucky this year with the fact that the home valuation came down and you have kind of a perfect storm happen because if it, home values drop further, we'd be taxing the residents a little bit more to keep our, I guess, services we're offering. So. Go ahead.
Thank you. No, we've talked about a lot of the different things that made all these adjustments and that six percent, so I appreciate all that information and it's a lot to, a lot to digest. I guess at this point, I'd be wondering if, and you've pointed out a few of those unknowns, this would be the time to pad anything, I think. So is there anything we can think of that's going to sneak up on us? And if so, what might it be?
For answer, if I knew that, I would have it in the budget.
You would have it in there, yeah.
I think, I think our, our, I shouldn't say our concern right now, but the union negotiations are the one thing that is still, you know, that's going to be a, a dollar amount that's undetermined and that may have an impact on, you know, we have a hundred and sixty-five thousand for that unknown, whether or not, you know, that'll meet those requirements. I, I just don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
This side.
So if that known unknown does go above a hundred and sixty-five thousand, how do we address that?
Budget amendment.
I was just going to say, presumably we will know, we'll know by the end of the year. I mean, I shouldn't say presumably, but if we know by the end of the year, we'd have to adjust someplace in our, in our budget to offset if it were to be more than a hundred and sixty-five thousand.
And for the record, we have taken the maximum levy and reduced it. You can reduce it, but you can't increase it, is my understanding of that.
That is correct. And, and as we just talked about, this, this unknown amount that I've stuck in a hundred and sixty, I mean, it's for things like that, right? Where you just don't know what the dollar amount's going to be. You know, we could set it at a hundred and sixty-five thousand at five hundred thousand. If we only use a hundred and sixty-five thousand, we can reduce it then, we just feel that.
But I was saying, I'm saying past councils have on occasion reduced the levy from what the maximum that was.
That was the question, should it be two hundred thousand? And then if we need to reduce it at the end, I think you've done your homework and I think, appreciate all that.
I'm thinking the opposite. Between the maximum levy and actually certifying it, individual council members that have ideas on how to lower the tax levy should be talking with staff to see if there's opportunity to do that. And there, there might be. Sometimes you have a good idea and it, it wasn't thought of and sometimes your idea is pointed out just how bad it might be. So it works both ways. Let's go to this side first. Any questions from you folks?
No questions.
I, not a question, it's more of a comment. I just wanted to thank staff. You guys have worked extremely hard on this and I know we are very fiscally conservative and, 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 you know, we are doing what is best for the city. And I appreciate Nate and Mr. Reynolds, how hard you guys work on this. And just, you know, like you said, for the record, we don't have, and I've said this a million times, I mean, I've asked it, I'm like, okay, so if our taxes are so high, where's everybody leaving to? But it's the opposite. People are actually coming to Shockley because we are the, you know, have the city with the lowest taxes. And I have to continue to say, we have some amazing amenities. Everything we have in Shockley, Shockley is great and all, all we've heard during nineteen night was how people are so happy. And many of the people who had smaller homes are upgrading to the Windermere area, to these beautiful, amazing homes. So we're not pushing people out of Shockley. People are extremely happy to come to Shockley and live here. So with that, I'd be extremely happy if there's no more questions.
Hang on a second. Mr. Reynolds?
I was just going to say in regards to the, the setting of the levy, you know, we do it, we do it very conservatively, try to dial it down as much as we can, but if we have an opportunity to reduce it more, we absolutely will. I mean, we, we certainly aren't looking to tax more than we need. And, you know, once more, as the unknowns become clearer, if that happens, then yeah, that, I, I think we're all for it.
All right, my, my comments. The, we've got a couple of weird, unique situations happening this year that we didn't have in past years. We've had a record at the State House in Minnesota of laws, changes and passage of laws. And I do think I'm accurate to say it's a, it's a historic record this year. And trying to work through all that is, you know, it's difficult. And there are some impacts from that. The other thing that we have is we have a situation where, you know, we have energy and gas prices, electric prices, and, and all these energy prices over the last, I would say, four years have been so fluid, I don't know how anybody could possibly gauge where, where it's going. We had two dollars and twenty-five cent gas, we had five dollars and some odd cent gas and now we're at just under four. We don't, what's going to happen in six months from now? Who knows? So there's a lot of unknowns out there and there's a lot of things that are out of our control. What is in our control is, you know, the level of service and the amount of staffing. Staffing is our highest expense, but, you know, you can't plow roads if you don't have people driving the trucks, right? You can't mow the parks if you don't have people doing this work, so it's a balance for sure. Do you have something, Mr. Whiting?
No, I just want to echo the, the great work that staff has done and, and thank them for that and I think, Councilmember Contreras.
Councilmember Contreras.
I'll take the first motion. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution R.2023 dash 106, canceling the debt service levies for taxes payable in 2024.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilor Contreras, seconded by Councilor Lara. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Whiting?
Yeah, I'll take the next one. You know, we continue to be one of the lowest taxed cities, so Mr. Reynolds didn't have to say that. I wanted to make sure that we, we said that, that we continue to be one of the lowest taxed cities of our size and our, our type. So for that, I'd make a motion to adopt resolution R.2023 Tac 107, setting the proposed maximum 2023 property tax levy collectible in 2024.
Second.
Motion was made for the proposed maximum 2023 property tax levy by Councilor Whiting and seconded by Councilor Contreras. Any discussion on the motion? I would just reiterate that there's opportunity between now and final adoption to bring your plans to staff for, for changes. And the one pet peeve that bothers me is that permit fee. And I've brought that to staff and it's going to bother me until we find a solution to it. So any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Was there two opposed, one opposed?
One.
Just one. Just one.
Okay. Four to one. Item number three.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution R.2023 dash 108, approving the levy of a special benefit levy pursuant to the Minnesota Statute, Section 469.033, subdivision six, by the Economic Development Authority for the city of Shockley, Minnesota.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second to that.
Motion by Councilor Lara, seconded by Councilor Whiting. Discussion on the motion? This one is setting the levy of the EDA. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Four to one, was it? Anything else staff needs on that one?
No, sir, we're good.
Next item is item 7A2, discussion on ordinance concerning use of cannabis in public. This is the one I didn't staple together because it was too thick for my little bitty stapler. Who's, Mr. Whi- Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. At our last council meeting, we discussed, first of all, please understand that this is still a work in progress, um, this is not in stone. Again, we're here to discuss it and to craft it, and, and, uh, so feel free to take it as you see it, feel free to trash it all with something new. This was just based upon our last discussion. So during that last discussion, there were two things that were really apparent. Uh, one was that the council was looking for less restrictions, uh, but there was some concern about having, uh, use around children, so, uh, as we looked at that, we, we took that into consideration and proposed the current language, and if you don't mind, I'll, I'll read through it really quickly, and then make sure that everybody understands the intent and the purpose of what it is that, that this says as it's stated here. Uh, the first thing we're doing is we're defining public space, and so for the particular, uh, piece of this ordinance, when we talk about public space, and only for this ordinance, we're, we're defining that public place as within any feat of any city-maintained outdoor swimming beach playground, other outdoor facility used for sports or athletics, park shelter, warming house, refreshment stand, outdoor entertainment facility, while the facility is in use for any private or public event, public restroom, all of that is dealing with that kid piece, uh, or any part of a property upon which any city-operated building is located, so that would be city hall or any other type of city building, excepting city parks. So what we're, what we, what we're saying there is that we, when we talk about city-owned property, we're accepting, meaning not including, city parks other than what we've already said above. And then, um, we, we've incorporated the state mandated, uh, restrictions on what a public place cannot be, uh, and then we simply say that you cannot use it in public places. In other words, we're saying that we can't use it in those areas that we've outlined and defined as public spaces. Uh, with that, I open it up for comments, suggestions, concerns. Uh, the only concern, I think, from a staff level we have is that we, we essentially have a more restrictive policy just on tobacco, and you may want to look at changing that to make them similar. Um, as it currently stands, we cannot smoke tobacco or use tobacco in a city park, um, so that may be something that you wanna work on later, but for now, just dealing with cannabis, this is, this is, this is what we're suggesting.
So, I don't know about the rest of you, but after our last discussion, so I'm out talking to folks that are both supporters of this, of the state action, and those opposed to state action, and, you know, it was at, uh, the TAP 21 event, actually, I was talking to some folks there, and, and I was thinking to myself, okay, now, if we had this in place, would it be allowed to, to be used here? Because everybody there has been carded because of alcohol, so it might have been able to be used there, but it's on city property, so if it's 50 feet away, I, I guess what it really boiled down to after thinking about this is how do we keep people that don't want to be exposed to this so that they're not forced to be exposed to it, right? That's kinda what I'm, what I was thinking, I, I know, I know I started out with the kids, and that's probably the highest priority, but then there's a population that just doesn't wanna be exposed to it, and they don't wanna be exposed to cigarette tobacco either. So how do we, how do we not force them to be exposed to something 50 feet? I mean, really? You know, so, so then I started looking at the state statute of what was passed, and it could have been probably two paragraphs instead of what it is, but, so, I don't know who can correct me wherever I get this wrong, but essentially what they have passed is there, there was a, a, the original intent by the supporters was to decriminalize, so that somebody that was using this product, you know, it wasn't, you know, their, their life wasn't destroyed, they weren't put in jail for five years or whatever the penalties might have been. So they wanted it decriminalized, and that's one of the actions the state took. They, they decriminalized the possession, and at the same time, they legalized the sale, the purcha- uh, the, the, and consumption. So you can possess it, you can sell it, you can purchase it, and you can consume it, but in the state law, they only allow consumption on your own private property. Do I have that right?
Well, that's an interesting question. Per the statute, yes, but there have been supporters of, of the legislation, Senator Lindsey Port, who every time I read an interview, you know, she specifically said that, uh, you know, we wanted to make sure that this was, uh, the private property was included, but that from her perspective, anybody should be able to, uh, to use it in a public place, and that was what they were trying to accomplish. Now, I don't get that from reading the statute.
Right.
Uh, it's, it, it's not well crafted, uh, and once again, is leaving cities in the lurch on trying to how to define how each city in a patchwork quilt will, will do this. Some are very restrictive, Prior Lake is very restrictive, uh, other cities are not. St. Paul, interestingly enough, is pretty restrictive as well, which I was kind of surprised by, um, their discussions, so.
So walk me through this. If, if Prior Lake is basically following the statute as I read it, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna allow the sale, the purchase, the possession, and the consumption on private property because the state law requires them to do that?
That's correct.
Correct?
Yes.
So it's, it's a lot like alcohol. You can go to liquor store, you can, you can buy it, you can't open it up in a parking lot and drink it unless you got a liquor license for an event or something. Uh, you can possess it in your car as long as it's not open.
Mm-hmm.
Same with the marijuana.
Yep.
And I'm not really sure how that works, be- if they got a seal on it or something. Um, you can't use it in your car, it would be driving under the influence.
Correct.
Um, so it's a lot like al- alcohol, really. You, you can't walk down the sidewalk with a beer.
Unless you're in a licensed event or.
Correct.
Designated social district now, I guess.
Right, unless, you know, if you've got an area set up, like, you know, TAP 21 or Rhythm On Rails or something like that, where you've got a designated area, you've been carded, you've been wristbanded, you're following these specific rules, can't have glass, these types of things, um, and, and I'm thinking, okay, how many people drink a beer, well, have a cigarette in a park on a trail at nine o'clock when nobody's around? Few of us.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, it's, and I think, if I remember correctly, it was Councilman Delaney who actually made the point, is that the only time that anything's, nobody cares about that, and we're not gonna go out there and say, you can't do, it's when there is an issue.
Right.
In other words, if you're out there drunk, raising hell, and causing damage to property or something, then we have an issue, and then it becomes an issue.
Right.
Uh, and, and then we have a way to basically curtail that issue.
So I'm, part of me is thinking, if you treat it like tobacco and alcohol, or tobacco, what's the problem, right? I mean, there's gonna be people that are going to consume with nobody knowing where they shouldn't be doing it, no different than me as a kid with a case of beer under the bridge, right? There's, and there's gonna be people that push the limit and do it where they shouldn't be doing it, and somebody complains and says, I don't wanna be exposed, and the police are gonna come, and they're gonna tell them, you know, take this somewhere else, or if they wanna push their issue, maybe they get a ticket or something, you know, whatever. So, I, I'm just a little bit concerned about being this 50 feet thing, and then when you get to public, public spaces, I mean, walking into a convenient gas station, that's a public space. It's a private space, privately owned property, it's a private business, but it's kind of a public space, right? Because everybody.
Don't control it.
Right, so how do you handle that?
Well, I, 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 so it's, I, I was at an event at Canterbury a couple of weeks ago, and Canterbury basically said, we do not allow the consumption, and of course, they never immediately smelled marijuana, which, you know, but, uh, uh, you know, those big private venues or any private property, they're gonna make the determination of what you can and cannot do on their property.
But doesn't the Minnesota Clean Air Indoor Air Act apply to them also?
It does, so you can't, you can't smoke inside their building, but they can also ban it on their premises.
Right. Mr. Whiting?
You know, I thought we had a great conversation on this, and the staff put together some language that we all, uh, that I thought we all had talked about. I understand some of your concerns, I don't think, uh, and I may be wrong, but if, if there's an issue where someone's complaining and doesn't wanna smell it, um, they could say something, and I think the person would move on. If it doesn't, you know, I think the police could ask them to move on. There's no ordinance in this case.
But if you pass, in this, if this is passed, the police couldn't tell them to move on.
Right, but I don't think the person's gonna wanna be in that situation, but I think if we don't, you know, I don't think we know at this point. So I thought we had a good conversation, and I liked what staff put together for the language here, it's exactly what we talked about. That's my comments.
Okay. Anyone else? What's everybody's thoughts?
Are we, uh, at one point, uh, did we discuss if we were gonna allow for licensing for events to be, have it allowed, or are we gonna have them put a disclaimer on their event? Like, let's use TAP 2023, for example, um, that when they're selling tickets and advertising, that they have to disclose this is a cannabis-friendly event, so people know that if they buy a ticket, there's a potential of them being around that.
And I think to answer that question, this needs to be decided first, because depending on what this does, um, if it's not allowed on city property, then if that event is on the city property, it wouldn't be allowed. If it's allowed on city property, then that's a valid question.
Sure.
And, and also, um, we can, uh, much like alcohol isn't allowed on a normal day, but council can approve i- in a, in an event, so you can make that decision and, and approve it. Uh, you could say, yeah, we're gonna allow, uh, uh, cannabis at, at TAP 2024. Um, you do not have to do that, but it's certainly within your power to do it.
But it wouldn't be on this portion, this is just public consumption, right?
No, all this does is it, it, as per state law, it, it recognizes that cities can, if you look at the, uh, three, uh, triple I, the premise of an establishment or event licensed to prevent on-site consumption, so that, the state has already said that the cities can allow that. Now, of course, we don't, we don't know what that process is going to be yet, what the state is gonna require, or if they're just gonna say the cities can do it on their own. We don't know that yet.
We'll have to wait until '25 when they got their whole new wing of government in, in place.
Yeah, we'll have to, yeah, the weed wing.
Yeah, the weed wing. Mr. Delaney?
Well, the, one of the problems you have as far as, is splitting out, you have the, I guess, consumables versus, I guess, the smokables. Um, I mean, consumables, if you look at the.
And that's another issue, yeah, right.
Yeah, somebody at the park, you wouldn't know, I mean, it's like having a beer at the park, you can get beers or sodas, I guess, whatever they have with TC infused, versus somebody openly smoking, so that's a, another.
That's his use, yeah. Yeah, and that, that's exactly right, and, and we didn't break that out, but there certainly is a difference on impact between, uh, edible or liquid consumption and smoking. Smoking it obviously impacts other people.
But on the same side, now that, now you got me thinking about, okay, if somebody throws some edibles on, on the ground around the, the playground, now you have kids potentially picking this stuff up.
Or going down a hole.
I mean, if somebody wants to use this stuff, I don't see why they can't do it at home, and if they wanna go out to a park afterward, fine, go home, do your stuff, and then go out to the park, you know? I mean, I don't know. Yep, what do we wanna do? What are we thinking?
Um, well, I can only make a comment. I, uh, I, when I first read this, I felt like it was, it covered, encompassed what we discussed, and I feel it's a good starting point for us to begin, and, um, I think it's been discussed before that, um, as time goes on and we learn, and maybe some issues arise, we need to make adjustments like we've done in the past, then we do that, but I, I feel like this is a good starting point. I feel that there's, it, uh, it's not too strict, it's not too lenient, so it's right in the middle.
Councilor Contreras?
Thank you. Um, I guess I'll echo this, the same as Councilor Lara. My only worry, and I think I heard you, Mr. Reynolds, um, you say that currently, you know, we have the, the, no tobacco in, in, in the parks, right? But this would be still allowed to be used, the, the smokable, you know, smoking, that, that would be okay in, in the parks, except, so that's where I'm kinda like, well, if you can't smoke tobacco in the parks, how?
We'd have to change our tobacco to match.
Okay, okay, okay. That's my, I think, my, my only thing, I'd like that to match up.
Yeah, and we can certainly take this language and make those adjustments in the, in the tobacco language as well.
Okay.
Mr. Whiting?
I concur, um, with the, the, the discussion with the language here, and with, uh, changing the tobacco to mirit.
Mr. Delaney?
I think it's a good place to start, and then as this thing kind of evolves, see what changes are needed. I'm sure, sure we'll be back discussing this again.
All right.
Okay, so this is what you're comfortable with, this is what we will bring back, uh, once we have it advertised. I just wanna make sure that we're, I'm reading you correctly.
You're reading, my reading is there's four members that like what you brought forward.
Okay.
I was more on the side of, with Prior Lake, after thinking about it, because I don't want people to be exposed, I don't wanna be exposed, and I thought they could just use it at home and then go to their function, but.
I would wanna, I'd be curious on complaints, if, you know, monitor complaints if, once it's approved and going.
I'm curious where to go.
That's a very good point, because then if we, if we see an excess of complaints on this particular issue, uh, you know, we'll certainly make that, make council aware and.
I, I think there's 5-0 that we all agree that there's probably gonna be potentially changes to this, so you might wanna write that right into this, that this may change at the discretion of the city council.
Well, that's.
Mr. Delaney?
I was gonna say, can we just set up a timeframe of six months from this going into effect to actually coming back and reviewing it, looking at the data you set as far as complaints and actually?
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
I, I'm gonna caution a, a little bit here, because yes, we can do that, but the real kicker of changes is gonna be.
2025.
25, when it really rolls out.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's absolutely correct.
Occasional review, periodic review.
Yeah.
We, we, we will, uh, tally complaints specifically on any, uh, cannabis use issues and, 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 uh, have those available.
And we can turn in complaints that we get to staff, too.
Right.
You know, try to, try to tag the actual person, if, you know, if they wanna be anonymous, just put it right on there that this person wants to be anonymous, but.
Sure.
Um, and staff will keep that information anonymous, but it's nice to be able to put a contact person if they have further questions.
And I would say parks and public, gonna try and collect that data, whether it's an issue in the park or issue in the public.
Yes, sir.
Yep. 8A, city bill list.
No questions.
Other side? All good? 8B, liaison administration reports, what side did we start last time?
I'm on this, yeah, it's this end over here. I'll start. Um, let's see, uh, September 8th and 9th, a couple TAP 2023 events, the 8th was the Entrepreneur Dinner, uh, fantastic event, um, get to meet everybody, and then, of course, the big event on Saturday, um, I heard nothing but great things, experienced nothing but great things, and I look forward to next year.
Very good, Councilor Contreras?
Oh, I'm not done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, September 11th, there was a swearing. Uh, September eleventh, there was a swearing in of our two officers, Officers Quizzi P. and Officer Dahl. And, um, yesterday, uh, we had a school board meeting, so there's some information from that. They renewed a three-year contract with Dr. Redmond, uh, for superintendent for three more years. They, um, adapted their, or they did preliminary approval of their truth and taxation for next year. They voted on the maximum amount, but that amount was neither mentioned or provided. Um, it's just, it was under state statute, that's what they're allowed to do, and make adjustments as needed. They welcomed seventy new teachers, the central office building was demoed. Um, Thursday, the twenty-first, will be the Kathy Carlson Aquatic Center dedication at West Junior High at five forty-five. So if anyone would like to attend, that is when it will begin. Um, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Contreras.
Thank you, um, so I did attend the dinner, um, for the TAP twenty, um, twenty twenty-three, great turnout, um, amazing. I, I really liked talking to all those entrepreneurs and just listening and, and seeing all these great ideas that are happening. I did end up attending the actual TAP twenty-three, um, I don't drink, so I just, I go to the one before. Alrighties, um, I attended the Skel General Meeting, um, there is, there's a, a great collaboration between the high school and Scott County, and even the, um, the Jordan High School, where there's a partnership, you know, there was, there's this partnership where they're constructing, they constructed four cabins to be sited at the Cedar Lake, um, Farm Regional Park, which was, um, which is funded through, um, the American Rescue Plan revenue, um, which captures dollars. Students gain real-world experience on building those cabins, and Skel County is able to accelerate projects that were already in the master plan. And now, um, visitors can soon begin to enjoy those cabins. Also, the second part was a great, um, board of, um, what is happening with, you know, our law enforcement and the crisis intervention, and promoting the, um, effective mental health programming, the Coordinated Response Program. Um, the present, the presenters, I mean, we're, we had the, the human, um, Health and Human Director, and we had social workers and our officers, I mean, we had Sheriff Luke and, um, Chief Tate were giving out, you know, just talking about how great, what they've seen, what is happening, and how, um, just going in and, and not making things worse, you know, making things better for these people who are having, are in huge crises, and how it's, how it's working really well, so that was great. After that, I attended the, um, RTF, uh, meeting, one of my favorites. Um, and, um, there was, you know, the, the, we talked, there was a review of the twenty twenty-three year-to-date, um, fin, um, financials. Numbers are good right now, um, we talked about scheduling software, um, you know, the, the, he was showing us, the new software that they're planning to work with, which is really good, I actually, I'm actually, I, I was so good to, happy to see that, because there's issues that once, um, there's no reminders, I guess, there's no reminder, so if you schedule something and your team forgets, or if your team is out doing something, which we kinda heard someone say that they were out in a situation, and they couldn't send, you know, the officers to go do that, they, they, there's no, there's no way of like letting them know right away, or even remembering, like, well, you're out there, you know, in, in, in a scene, or something's happening, like, what do you do, stop everything to go to your train? So it, it was, it was a lot of good things to hear with this program that you'll be able to like, um, confirm or cancel and, 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 and do. Um, the other thing that, um, what was, um, we, sorry, let me, let me get to it, there was like a fee schedule in regards to that. So like, if there's no shows, or if there's, um, just, um, sorry, I have it, it's just my little packets.
Somebody can cancel, they get the opportunity to reschedule that room, you know?
Right, so for, mainly, I guess, what was adopted that day were, um, non-member agency, non-member agency cancellation policy and no-show policy, cause there has been times when they forget, you just forget, you know, you're doing, your teams are doing stuff and you forget. So if, um, a non-member, they're still gonna work on the members, because that's when it came up, the scenario is like, well, what about if you're in a, I think it's called a barricade or something, right, if something's happening, like, you can't just get up and go. So with that, there's gonna be, um, there's gonna be up like, um, the, the cancellation will, about, about hundred and fifty, let's see. Any cancellation after that period was, you get like thirty days prior, right, well, to cancel, um, with, without any penalties. But if you, um, any cancellation after that period will result in a cancellation fee of a hundred and fifty up to ten days prior to the event. So it's just, the whole idea is just to get people to be more, to show up, you know, show up.
Or at least communicate.
At least communicate, right?
Ahead of time.
Yes, so that, that was pretty.
Book this, book this space.
Right.
Right, so other people can use, and then there was just also, um, a, a, um, property and casualty insurance renewal. So that was that, and then I also attended the swearing in of, um, Officer Ethan and Officer Sonia. And while we were there, I, I heard a comment, and don't quote me on it, but I believe Shakopee is the second city after Saint Paul with two Latino Spanish-speaking officers. And, I mean, it's great, but those numbers are really low, you know, it's, we need to get out there and try to get our officers, our female Spanish-speaking Latina, you know, to come and, and, and join the field, I know it's hard when, you know, but, um, super proud of Shakopee having two, um, new officers, but two Spanish-speaking Latina officers. Yep, that's it.
Thank you, very good. Mr. Whiting.
Thank you, I had the honor of presiding over the, uh, Entrepreneur Dinner for min, uh, for the TAP twenty twenty-three, so, uh, got to, uh, welcome Congressman Craig and, uh, other state officials, uh, who greatly support our Innovation Center and our cultural corridor, and they've showed it with, uh, bringing Shakopee, uh, the money. So, um, thank them for being a part of that, and had a great time and met, met a lot of people, and, uh, after that, got downtown, I didn't get down to the, the TAP Fest, but I did make it to Chasten and the Ovation, so I did see the, the final street, uh, street party. Or, there's another street party coming up, so, one of those final street parties of, of the summer, but not the last.
Very good.
Okay, I did go to the TAP twenty-three event on Friday, I thanked staff for putting that together, that was really, I heard nothing but great things, uh, from everybody in attendance. Uh, got a chance to meet a lot of old faces, new faces, um, meet a lot of entrepreneurs, which was really cool. Also went to the Saturday event, ran into similar faces. Met some new faces and old faces there, again, a great, great event, uh, really enjoyed it, my wife and I went down there. Then also did a swearing in, um, for as far as SPU, went to a budget workshop, um, that was, uh, really, really great information. Different, it's, it's similar and it's different when, when you don't have the debt and you're trying to balance services, growth and everything else, versus we have debt and we're trying to do all those things, so different, similar but different en- environment, um, yeah, that's.
This is a little more in and focused on certain aspects, where ours is a lot of different aspects.
Different things, yeah, so just, just kind of a different, different feel there, uh, they had also their family picnic, uh, attended that. Um, one sixty-nine coalition meeting, um, we're trying to get, I guess, more membership from the north, so our next meeting will be geared toward the more, toward the north, uh, meeting place, trying to get more people involved there. Um, looking at recruits, um, recruiting, uh, getting more members to engage, um, in this upcoming year. Looking at a new budget for twenty twenty-four, um, insurance, officer selection, um, looking at, again, setting priorities also. Are we gonna go with a lobbyist, we're gonna have, uh, somebody come in and speak on that behalf as far as explaining what a lobbyist would do for the group and, uh, anything else, um, I think that might be it, Spock, one sixty-nine, uh, that's.
You gotta do an Elk River, and what's that other one up there, uh, Zimmerman, where you, that last stop sign on one sixty-nine that shuts down everybody heading north. Get those involved.
Well, I know that Golden Valley has a project on Pillsbury Avenue that they've been working with MinDOT and the one sixty-nine coalition on for a while. Um, and that has to co-coordinate with the mobility study. So I would be looking at them for that, and I think a lot of the north of four ninety-four, uh, aspects of one sixty-nine, gathering that input for, in partnership with that mobility study from the transit station on Marshall, Marshall and one sixty-nine. It's gonna be critical to have the north involved in that, because some of their projects are gonna have a direct impact. And vice versa, so, good reports, my report, um, Friday, September eighth, I asked that, uh, Vice Mayor Whiting would fill in for me at the, uh, TAP twenty-one dinner. I was preoccupied with the Raceway Park's ten-year reunion, and after spending more than twenty-five years of my life there, I felt obligated to be a part of that. Uh, so I appreciate you filling in for me.
Where was the event held?
Uh, it was at Turtle Social Center.
Oh, great place to have an event.
Yeah, uh, big turnout, a lot of good stories, found some old pictures of, uh, at a banquet with, uh, Dale Earnhardt Senior and Rusty Wallace and Mark Martin and everything else back in my, when I was a good racer days. So that was pretty special, I'm gonna try to get a copy of that picture, but, uh, um, September ninth, Saturday, I did attend a TAP twenty-one. It was, I thought it was really, uh, uh, heavily attended, although I didn't go to the prior, so I don't know what to gauge that on, but it seemed well-attended. Did find some non-alcoholic brews, and they were pretty tasty, I had to go back for a second. I stumbled on out of there with no alcohol in me. I checked out some of the, uh, entrepreneurs too, the safe people were there, the bicycle thing was there, uh, two different bikes, uh, pretty cool stuff. Know all about these bikes now, but, um, Monday, I did attend the police swearing in of our two new police officers, welcome aboard. And I did have a, a couple of resident concerns lately that are, all seem to be tied around the school drop-off, pickup, uh, walking routes, things like that. Fordham, all the staff, I know they're working on that, so thanks staff for that. That's the end of my report, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, October third, both the, both Chelsea and I will be at the International City Managers Conference in Austin, Texas. So, uh, Acting City Administrator Jeff Tate will be here in this seat. Uh, during the week, both Chelsea and I will be available, um, by phone or email or text, whatever. We're, we certainly will continue to be working and doing what we need to do, um, while we're, while we're there. Uh, on the seventeenth, we're planning on having a closed session to give an update on our union negotiations, so, uh, we've got some interesting things to discuss with you then, and that's what I have to offer.
Okay. Other business?
One last final thing, um, starting to a great read, thank you, Mr. Reynolds, for recommending this, so I'm gonna make sure I get this.
That book is kind of amazing, because it's, it's written by Shakopeean, uh, you know, a lot of times when you get experts, you have to get them from outside of, of, of the area, otherwise you're not considered an expert. This guy has a tremendous amount of experience, and he writes with humor, and, uh, really very basic management stuff. And so, uh, you know, that's something that, uh, the key leaders are currently, uh, spending time, uh, during our meetings, reviewing each chapter, taking a chapter in meetings, so.
Any other business, Counselor Contreras?
I do, I have a question, and, um, I'll be honest and sincere, it's just a concern I have, but I'd like to direct it to you. Um, it was, um, I've heard that there were some meetings being held with, um, some of our developers, um, yourself, and I just was kinda questioning, like, if anyone knew about them, or what are these meetings for? Or, I mean, in a way, I'm happy you're meeting, but my question is, can any one of us else also be involved in those meetings? Is there, is it, is it city-related, or are those just, are you, I don't know.
It's, it's not city-related, um, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to learn more about the other side besides what we see here. It's not, and I would encourage anybody else, if you have any questions about development, to, to ask those that are involved in it. I mean, we, we all seem to know the city side of it, but we don't look at a lot of things from the other side. Um, same with businesses, you know, if you wanna ask a business, you know, what their capital outlays are, what their operational expenses, how, you know, what are some of these things that go into it? I don't, and I know some of that from the small business side, I don't know a lot of it from the really big business sides, although I work for some large corporations, you know, Sears Roebuck, GE, things like that, so I guess I know some of that. But I, I, you know, I don't know a lot of the, the other side of the, you know, real estate, I just, I just don't know much about it. So I like to get informed on some of these issues, it certainly has nothing to do with the city. I would encourage anybody to talk to real estate agents, uh, builders, whoever, whether they're here or somewhere else. I like talking to the engineer tonight to learn more about my misplaced understanding of how the stormwater calculations, I, I, I missed the piece about these ponds and how much comes out of them, and how that's controlled based on the ponds and the total amount of wetlands replacement, so I, obviously, I didn't understand that piece either, so.
No, and, and I appreciate it.
I just have concerns too about that too, if, if that's happening, cause you're representing the city just by being.
No, no, I'm not representing the city.
Let me, let me finish, please, as mayor, you represent the city, if you're talking to developers within the city, you have to make sure that they know that you are not representing the city and that you fully explain that. And even at that point, I still have a problem with it, cause it hasn't been driven by this body as, hey, I think you should go get some information from our developers. I think that really, I mean, I understand you learning about it, but as mayor, you, you're pushing that limit, I think, and there's a concern there.
That's where I was a little worried, right, cause I'm like, well, I never heard it from you many times that you say you're, you know, you are just, you know, you, we're all together as a body when we're all together, but it's like, I, I worry when, it's like, is it a positive, um, I'm just afraid that they're gonna be like, well, Shakopee doesn't want any more development or something, right?
No, 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 not.
That's where I'm like.
No, no, nothing like that at all, uh, matter of fact, I was called, I was asked by staff to come to City Hall to talk to developers on potential development on the, uh, sand pit. And I asked, you know, some questions ahead of time, cause I certainly don't wanna get into trouble. And it, I, I thought it was a good conversation that, that I had with, uh, two people on, on that development. And in that case, I, I don't believe I was representing the city either, because, uh, well, Jim Thompson was there. But, you know, I made it clear that, you know, anything that comes forward goes through council and staff, I mean, that's, that's a gimme, so, yes.
I was gonna say, how's it any different from us meeting with business owners downtown, I mean, I've met with some, and I clearly state that I'm here on my own behalf, I'm not representing council, and we just usually have a good discussion about either their business or what's happening in Shakopee, I get their feedback and, maybe they have concerns, I mean, that's just part of, I, I wanna say it's part of our interaction with the community, but it's, it does seem to be part of interacting with the community, you.
No.
I've made it very clear, you know, that this has got nothing to do with the city, that I'm, I'm here to be educated.
Okay.
Cause I just don't understand some of the finer, you know, I don't understand, like, when they, uh, the water thing. I, I, I don't really know real estate very well, um, you know, we, we hear a lot about, on the news about what's happening with real estate and interest rates and all these things, and it's nice to know from people that understand that much better than me.
Right. And, and just to be clear, the only reason, I guess, I brought it up was because you always, you know, tell us what you do, and it never like pops, I'm like, well, so maybe, but again, that's why I asked, was, is it city or is it just?
No.
Like education, okay, no, we're all good, all right, thank you for your, your, your answering.
The other, other business item that I had was, and, and here's where I want to represent the city, but I wanna make sure I have permission from council to do so. So, you know, I, I, I talk with Mr. Reynolds on occasion about some of the things like fiscal disparities, the Minnesota State Aid roadway formula, the city doesn't get any, uh, LGA, local government aid. And I'm thinking, you know, we have all these commercial industrial and, and a lot of entertainment in Shakopee, so we go out of our way to create jobs, right, with our economic development. And at, and, and we, we all know about the reverse commute issues up one sixty-nine and all these transportation issues, so we almost like, because of our efforts, we cause a lot more transportation usage than a city that decides not to have a job base and commercial industrial. But yet we don't get more state aid roadway based on the formula that the state uses, even though our roadways are getting used by many more people from outside of Shakopee because of our efforts to create these jobs and have these commercial industrial things, right? Um, and, and same with fiscal disparities, to be honest. Um, and, and same with fiscal disparities, to be honest. I mean, we're creating a, a workforce center in the southwest metro, probably the largest in the southwest metro area is Shakopee. And so that brings in a lot of the transportation, uh, users and stuff on our, on our roads and stuff, but yet we're penalized with the fiscal disparities for, for doing what the state wants to, wants us to do, right? So I'm thinking somehow you would think that we shouldn't be punished on the fiscal disparity side. We should be getting the, a broader Minnesota State Aid roadway calculation because of our commercial industrial base and job creation. And, and I'm trying to tie these things together, uh, to benefit us, because it, we're getting punished on all three of them for doing what's good, you know, you know what I'm saying? Do, do, am I making sense?
So what are you looking for?
Well, I mean, this is something I want to work with Mr. Reynolds and some of our state leaders and federal leaders and say, hey, look, you know, a lot of this is state, but, you know, some of it might be fair, federal, but it, it disturbs me that we, we get docked so much on fiscal disparities when they should be thanking us for, for what we do for the region. They're punishing us, and it's, it's-
No, I wouldn't have any issues with you talking to state and federal, uh, anybody that wanted to talk about fiscal disparities-
It's very frustrating.
To try and get some movement there. I, I don't see any issues with that.
It's also frustrating on, on the state aid roadway. Yes, we get dollars for our state aid roads, but in comparison to other communities, um, our, other communities are getting state aid roadway funding for their roads, but their roads are not used like our roads. Our, our roads are used for intense, intense, you know, commercial industrial, um, job, uh, consumer back and forth. So in reality, our roadway, because of our diverse base and our job creation, get, get a lot more usage than some of these other sleepy communities. So you'd think that they, their, their mindset would be, you know, maybe the formula should be based on road, uh, road counts, trip counts or something, you know?
Know anybody on the transportation?
Yes, matter of fact, we do. So I just wanted to throw that out. There's something I'm thinking about and working with the staff on and, and kind of wanted to get a sense of council, what you think.
Does anybody have a concern?
No, I agree. You, you can.
We're all good, all right. So if we're gonna, if we're going to adjourn to October third, we'll have to put in party, because, uh, Chief Tate will be here and administration will get here, so it'll be a party night.
Beat the party.
Details for him. Under the agenda.
Counselor Contreras.
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, October third, twenty twenty-three at seven PM.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion passes, we adjourn.
I was gonna mention-